That big old mark.
Do you remember that whole ordinance looked like a sausage machine at the meeting?
Okay?
Don't lose it because we're not making another call.
Supervisor.
Does he?
Yeah.
Oh, it's probably because they don't have enough money.
They probably can't afford it.
Okay.
That's all it's been held. It tries out braces.
Yes.
Yeah, it's one dollar to ruin.
And then.
I had a check in the mail that said I wanted to manage which of the four man which you.
I don't think they've been having you.
That's what I heard, yeah.
I don't know. This is this is this is.
Our beef is on.
Actually, the beef, right, yeah, the beef is being shipped. All that beef that they sold is being shipped to China.
Okay, but it won't be happy. It's gonna wait. I thought you sent an email.
Actually, I have a freighter.
You have a wagon?
It's a freighter.
There was, it was a public work.
It's seven o'clock. Okay, the break we're leaving will start. Russell.
Here.
Greg.
Here.
Bishop.
Here.
Kim.
Here.
Debbie.
Here.
Invitation, Mr. Posey's gonna give our invitation today.
Close call. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this prayer and for all the blessing you give us this way. You ask us to deal with this building and especially with those country members that are doing those things that we don't care about. Can't accept the sins that don't affect you. All the ashes of our ownness and our soul made in the breastplate of here. We ask you, ma'am, to forgive us of our sins. In Jesus' name, we pray.
Amen. Amen. The citizens of America, in the due repulsive, righteous hands, one nation, under God, in the vehicle, with liberty and justice for all. On the text side, of all the relations to your texts, one state, under God, one and individual. The citizens' report. There's gonna be one for the citizens that's here that has a question or whatnot. Or if you're gonna have a question or wanted to agenda items, we've got market that you're gonna have a question on the agenda items so we can separate the two. Greg, do you want to?
Yeah.
I want to tell the council and everybody else, I really appreciate y'all getting involved in Taylor Street. And that meeting is coming up on the nineteenth. And Rita is going to make sure everything gets done. Anyway, she's gonna do her best. And I believe the mayor's gonna go to that meeting also and maybe, maybe the mayor pro tem. Anyway, we need more of this involvement. Everybody in the city needs to be involved in everything that's going on. And we've, we've got a lot of things in town that are, that the people are proud of. And one of them is the sign. And we really need to respect our sign and we need it taken care of and we need it changed out. And if the city personnel don't have time to do it. And there's somebody available, as Jimmy did last time, and we really, really do appreciate him. He changed out the sign board. And we are gonna call on him again, I'm sure. But anyway, and I think he'll be more than happy to do it. But I know there's a lot of people around town that do different things, flags and flowers and all kinds of stuff and take care of the community. We definitely appreciate all that. And the sign board is, is a pretty important piece here in the city. The citizens rely on it for information and communication. It doesn't need to be taken, you know, for granted at all. Again, it's a pretty important piece. And we need to upkeep it and soon as it cools off a whole lot. I'm gonna see if there's a sign guy in town that might be able to help us with the lighting because I've noticed we got a couple of bulbs out in it. And, and I hope that people will not take our sign for granted and respect it and not put it on social media and manipulate it. That's just not right. And that shouldn't be happening and we should be, we should be respectful of this thing that we do have in the city. And, and again, I appreciate everybody's help and everything else. I know Joe does the feeding, fanning and.
A lot of people.
There's a lot of people that are involved in all kinds of stuff, so we do definitely appreciate everybody's help.
The nineteenth on Taylor Street at what time?
We don't know, that's all the information we have at this point. Don't know where they're gonna have it, so don't really know how much room they're gonna have and all of that. I know we can't have a forum there, so, but citizens, we don't know.
And if you have to set up a meeting, that goes.
Excuse me? Well, the citizen should be able to go. The citizen should be able to go to that meeting.
But, but, I mean, if they have it here, yeah. If they have it across the street, I don't know what facilities they have have a meeting in, you know, I, that's why I say I don't, I don't have much room they're gonna have for the amount of people that might be there.
But if you go, you need to be respectful and not arguing and we're there to try to make a deal.
Right.
I understand. My name is Mrs. Dolan. I want to address something yet again about the fire department because I did many, many times about it, the donation. I talked to a lawyer in Greenville and he said that when it is a general strictly the same donation, it can go into your general fund and spend however y'all want to instead of going to the fire department as we know that it used to go to. And so I think it should be addressed yet again that it says donation for the fire department. The Turk might be.
Do you know if the fire department's receiving their monthly donations from the city?
Excuse me, I'm talking to these people here and I've already asked you like three or four times and your predecessor. And this is my time, you can address it when I get done here. I have three minutes. I also talked to the EPA and they said anytime that a water line is broken, that they have to flush the line. Now, the water line was broken by the big house, Donna's old house. I saw them and they did flush it and they argued with me, but they did flush it at nine forty-five that night. They waited in that agents, there was another line broke and I asked, was it flushed? And Dana, and she said she didn't know. But the boy, the young man told me that they would make sure that they would have a record online and given to the office so I could check it. You're, I'm not gonna mess with you on this. When a line's broken, it needs to be flushed or I will be talking to EPA again and again. I don't mind. The rate of the appraisal is you're all gonna have it, your rate, I've spoken, been to the meetings with appraisal district. The rate, you will have your rate because of the increase in the appraisals of all properties, you're gonna have a windfall at least. I know mine is doubled. A lot of these people are tripled. And I don't think that is right because y'all gonna have triple the amount of money coming in to, into the city. I think that rate needs to be really adjusted. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
If anyone wants to know if the fire department's receiving their checks, they are more than welcome to come up here and request the public information request. And that report can be printed out of QuickBooks. But as of date, no one has physically walked in or emailed.
That's enough.
Request.
I have.
Or the fire department.
I have, and I shouldn't have to go through this Walter Roll to ask, did you guys pay the fire department that money? It's wrong. I, you, you told me three times last time when I brought this up, that I wasn't right. And I am right. I came into your office three times.
You did not specifically ask for.
I did. I said, do you pay the money?
The answer was yes.
No, you didn't. You said, I don't know and shrugged off. Yes, ma'am.
I cut the check every month.
Listen. You wanna go, we want to go now to the consent agenda. Do we have any discussion over the minutes of July, July twenty, twenty-two?
Motion to approve the minutes of July twenty-two.
Any seconds?
Absolutely.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is the financial reports of July twenty-second. Is there any discussions on there?
So this is the note on resources.
Mosquito spray?
Mosquito spray.
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
It's on both. It should be on both.
Check the spelling on account number eleven, sixty-seven, one, two, nine.
For which?
X, X, uh, it's one.
Eleven what?
Uh, sixty-seven, ten.
Sixty-seven, ten?
You should probably.
Oh, I didn't. I put it in once and it's that same code, move on.
Make a motion to approve financial reports for July twenty-two.
Any seconds? All in favor? Okay, next is the.
All in favor.
I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next is accounts payable. Next is accounts payable for August twenty-twenty-two. Any discussions on that?
It ain't one thing.
I was looking for the thing that you had.
I took it.
Oh, well, you want it.
Do you want to ask about this, the voluntary volunteer fire department payment for cancer as your own two-one-nine for three hundred dollars?
Uh-huh. That's the monthly payment, sorry. And you'll see it in your report from QuickBooks, what we actually paid out last June, July to, under account code.
Zero, zero, two.
Zero, zero, two, one, one, nine, for two hundred seventy-four dollars and twenty-seven cents.
Make a motion to approve accounts payable for August twenty-twenty-two.
Any seconds?
Seven. Greg, somebody, yeah.
Okay. So, all, all in favor?
Aye.
All. All right, next is the information reports.
We've, so if the public works report, they were, this is the first report for whatever.
Okay.
So we have two police reports.
Okay.
Got it.
Debbie, you wanna read those? Public reports report? I don't have them.
That's what was passed down.
I'll read it. I'll read it. Water main repairs, eight, water taps, zero, sewer taps, one, sewer line repairs, one, sewer backups, two. Lift station repairs, zero, line locates, three, street maintenance, two, meter work orders, six, lines, dead ends, needs flushed, twenty. Hydrants exercise, ten, all the parts delivered, four.
Okay, Debbie, you wanna read the police report?
Yes. Uh, there's someone here. To the fire department? No report for the fire department. And then we'll read your.
Man, great.
Oh, sorry.
Ben, I'd like to volunteer liaison with the fire department.
Hey, David, great, thank you. Could you see? We can start. Demonstration report. Lake Ground Hall, Open House, Sunday Hall in Honey Grove, eight twenty-five, twenty-two, at five thirty P.M. Feeding, fanning will be at September the sixth, twenty-twenty-two. L.R.A. Ranch Romeo and Wolf Fest, nine sixteen and nine seventeen of twenty, twenty-two. Fossil Day will be ten fifteen, twenty-two. Oh, twenty, excuse me, number four, Twenty Mile Broad Cell, ten eight twenty-two. Now you can get the police report. So Nick, get a little bit.
We can't get anything you're saying.
Really well learned.
Thank you. July the fourth attended Fourth of July fireworks. July the eighth, ninth, attended the Doney Romeo concert. July the eleventh, Department of Health conducted monthly training meeting. July the twelfth, attended town hall meetings. Can you still hear me?
Barely, but ten.
Okay. Department status, calls for service, seven, arrests, none. Traffic stop, seven, warnings, citations, two slash five. Note, two vehicles towed, expiration, restoration, and no insurance. Opening investigation cases, zero. Personnel, eight. Six sworn, two civil, civilians. E.M., open. Reserve hours, one hundred sixteen. Patrol hours, thirty-seven. Mileage unit, oh, one mark, zero patrol miles. Unit two, mark, seventy-nine patrol miles. Fuel unit, zero, one mark, gallons, nothing. Unit two, mark, zero gallons. Social media department, Facebook, July, seven hundred seventy-five likes, nine hundred followers. Completed projects, patrol vehicle, one, force C.D., inspection registration completed. Ongoing project, T-CO, police vehicle, grant, radio, G.P.S., magnetic strips, card reader, printer, fire extinguisher, first aid kit, on order or installed. Grant funds scheduled to be sent and all documents uploaded in e-grants by the end of August. Grant to be finalized, closed in September. Begin discussion with FANN and I.S.D. to provide officer presence on campus assist with new state mental, mandates. Respectfully submitted, Chief Dave. The next is the O.D.'s.
Mowing, we did not receive any updated, but we also have our, we do our mower, there's really no need unless y'all, for some reason, wanna have somebody on backup, but we have somebody on backup, we can't guarantee they're even charged the same price. So this is up to y'all.
They probably wouldn't get that.
I wouldn't think so either. I think it would just. That's what I was. So I would, I would table it, definitely.
Yeah. Move the tables out there. That's my motion. Move the tables out there.
Three seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
All. Discuss, consider action on Taylor Street repairs. I can tell you that the gentleman that did Mill Street gave us a quote what he would do. And Dana has, has been there, but I think with the road, twenty-four foot, Greg.
The road is currently twenty-four feet long, a thousand feet, excuse me, twenty-four feet wide, a thousand feet long.
And to do that, just dig the road, it was.
Twenty-four thousand.
Rush.
Now, he said they could take the road in and make it only eighteen, twenty, twenty feet wide, drop down to about eighteen thousand dollars.
But.
There's no, that does not include digging out ditches, the ditch is really gonna add another twelve foot.
Twelve, fifteen, six.
Yes.
So.
But we're telling no, y'all still have work to talk to Trinity, so.
Can't hear you.
I wanna make a motion to table the Taylor Street, uh, street repairs until after the meeting with Upper Trinity.
Okay. Thank you.
Question about that Taylor Street meeting, is there expected to be a forum or council present?
No, they asked for not a forum.
They don't have any.
Really, they're not wanting to have a, a lot of people, so I mean, I, I don't really know, you know, I would not tell someone not to go, you know, I would go. But I don't know, until we get there, we don't know what, how they're going to run it, you know, so. But the day of August the nineteenth, I don't know the time yet. They're supposed to get back.
Yeah, we're just gonna send. That's what I'm sure of.
I wanna make sure.
Yes, we have a second.
Debbie's second.
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
All. Okay. Next is discuss, consider action with the Bureau Vericose Contract.
Okay, uh. I'm definitely not happy with Bureau Vericose in the safer form. But found out another situation with the city of Anna. The city of Anna started out about the size we are and they have grown tremendously. During their growth, they used Bureau Vericose because they were kind of overwhelmed with permits, inspections and all right at first. But they saw pretty quick that they were in the wrong boat. They got a bill for a hundred and ninety thousand dollars for inspections. And they said they couldn't afford to pay another one. So they had a special meeting and terminated the contract with, hired their own in-house person for sixty-two thousand. That saved them two-thirds right there. So. My issue with them is we're not getting what they agreed to. I say that, I've had, personally had three inspections done and they have not shown up on. And they didn't show up. So again, if they're not gonna show up, what are they there for?
What was the follow-up when they're not showing up?
Yeah, they, they sent me an email. Said, it's good to go. Okay? That's all I got from them.
Any other comments? And I got nothing. Did he get an email?
So it wasn't like an actual.
They didn't come out there.
No, they.
So it's good to go when you have?
Yeah.
So from a process standpoint, you requested to file a full deferment, you requesting an inspection. What's the status of that inspection according to your records?
Clear, passed, and I know he's walked in the office whenever actual go appointments, but I'm not sure if he's not showing up, what he's doing when he walks in our office and says, it's done, it'll be loaded in the system in a couple of hours.
Can I speak?
Yeah.
This happened to me back in December before Mary Hayes died. Her gas went out and we called Dana, they set it up, the guy to come and state it. We had to be there, she was staying at my house because she couldn't stay in her house because the leak was so bad. And when the guy came, he made Jimmy go in and take the, whatever that thing was.
I had the pressure test live.
And he had to do all the pressure tests himself, he did it himself. He sat there and watched him and told him what to do.
But that was, that was his job, he did it. He did do it.
But we wanted Mary in, so we didn't cause no conflict because, you know, she wanted to be back in her bed, so that actually happened.
Did they pay you team? For that?
No, 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 we, we paid them a hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Yeah.
And I come up here and talk to Dana about it.
And she had to do what she had to.
Talked us a hundred and twenty-five dollars to do the inspection, but for that money, we're not, I don't know.
I guess it wasn't them, but, you know, Jimmy did the. I did the work. Any more discussions?
Generally, you have a whole, another branch before you let your.
We're working.
Regardless of how they're ready to get in there.
We're working.
Maybe. What do you think?
One of my things?
Yeah. You're taking your head like I'm that way.
We have talked to a couple of people and I've got a gentleman that is interested in doing our inspections. And he also said, I talked to Mark Posey, he's overloaded, but he said that.
but he said that, that he wanted a police in the vicinity of the city whenever he did it, you know, in Anna.
How's that? Eer.
If you haven't heard of our reputation?
Yeah, I've heard, I just wanted to.
If you don't have that reputation, the guy in commerce, I saw it, and I mean.
Oh, that's right, he did.
Yeah, he did. He was selling her old, he didn't say that.
No.
And see, our, our, our police isn't going to come out, because if he's calls me and says, "I'm coming out right now," how are we going to get someone seventy-five miles on walk to come out here to be whenever he comes? So yes, we're talking to people about this, because I'm aware that if we get rid of Bureau Veritas, that I've talked to Honey Grove too, and they have told me, you know, that they don't go with it either because it's too expensive. So, you know, we're just going to have to start working. Right now, we don't have no building, so that gives us a little bit of talent trying to get people in place, and that's what we're trying to do right now.
Yeah, I did have a part-time or fractional inspector, especially if we can partner with Honey Grove.
You know how Honey Grove does it? Okay, Honey Grove told me that they don't pay them themselves. What they do is, what if the permit is, you know, I don't know, I'm going to their council meeting tomorrow, I want to talk to them again, but they said that the pay, that the people pay for their permit is the pay that the gentleman gets paid for coming out there to inspect.
Okay, like generally, I'll be that way to do it.
Yeah, so that is the way I would try to set it up.
Do you want to table this and bring it back next month? Do you want to kill it?
I would like to make a motion. And I'd like to make a motion to present Bureau Veritas with notice to terminate the service contract the next business day after the Dollar General store opens for business and not use Bureau Veritas for any services after August the ninth, twenty-twenty-two, other than what is needed for Dollar General.
Actually, it sounds like, we've covered they're not really doing it.
They have to do a final inspection and all that.
No, I'm talking about the citizens here, I'm not talking about Dollar General.
Correct.
I'm sure they're going to do a stuff with Dollar General. Do I have, do I have a second? Okay. All in favor?
So, real quick, discussion. So after August ninth, if somebody has something that needs to be inspected, they come to the City Hall to get a part of it, if what happens.
We'll have to find somebody to do the inspection law. I don't think there's a problem.
Well, I'm just, again, what's the process?
Well, this gentleman hasn't gotten that from me, but he is, he works with Tampa Bond, and he is, what do you call it, so, he does.
He's an inspector.
Yes, he's an inspector. And he's, he's doing another job at Bond right now, but he's wanting, I think, to retire, and he's going to do this, you know, for his retirement. Has it given away the pricing? I haven't got that from you, but like I said, the pricing is going to be whatever our permit says, and that's what I'm discussing, if that's, if that would be workable for him. If not, he'll tell me what's workable for him.
The City of Wolf City has nobody to do theirs right now. The City of Trenton has nobody to do theirs right now. And they're in the same boat. If they have an inspection to do or whatever, they have to find somebody to inspect it.
They can find somebody to inspect it.
Go find somebody. Motion's made.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Call the question.
You want to?
Call the question. What's going on?
No.
In the, yeah.
And he said that, okay, if, my mind scattered, yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
All, you're saying?
Yeah.
So you're, you're in that. Okay, next is, discuss and consider jobs description and possible workshop date. And the workshop dates is for the planning and zoning and the ordinance, it's not for this?
Y'all said, y'all actually, that's how it was originally worded on the last agenda, so it's worded exactly the same. Because I guess there was some discussion on whether or not y'all, y'all needed to change anything, but actually the guys changed theirs.
They did change theirs.
The guys changed theirs.
Uh, this is what I got so far.
Got, did you, it's not the original?
No, it is not, it's still the original.
Right. So, do we need to read that? Yes, man, if you're not, I can make, I can make a copy of that. I just can make a copy of this. That's all they did.
Okay. Um, do we want to set a workshop date while she's doing that?
Job description.
Unless, should be a workshop date for the ordinance, is what it's supposed to be.
Yeah, but we don't need a, yeah, but we don't need a workshop for. I believe Dana said she didn't think the chief of ours was, uh, assumed.
End of?
No.
Job description. Oh, job description.
Job description. Yes. Um, you still think yours is okay?
Who?
Your job description.
I mean, it's three pages long, I don't know what we're, well, but it's pretty much everyone's there.
The original workshop date.
I don't know.
Not on that one.
So y'all don't need to, so is there anything at all with this that needs to be?
If we're going to do any other action on that, then we'll have to include not doing the workshop one.
The guys did come and clarify.
Like, the, like, under weekly, it says the clean screens, we know that actually has to be done every day, so that'll need to be updated operations, which they've actually been at as ten. Getting flow readings and waste work, that was not on here, but they did that. The CD and then on two, they have to change up those cords, so if they need it. Eight, they've done the leaks are priority, all of the tasks put on hold until leaks are Under weekly operations, you'll see that these, this was done, this is really done two to three times this summer, probably because of the, how bad they grow. Under monthly operations, under five, equipment maintenance, that's, they made a notation that's really under, it could be monthly or it could be every day if it's under heavy use.
It is basically every use they need to do.
Right. And they do, and that's more of our, because, you know, those, I mean, for instance, a tractor, a mower, shredder, I guess they put it under monthly operations because that's typically used.
Did they give them?
Once or twice a month. Not yet. We actually are going to have to downsize for one day originally off because our tractor will not support the one they originally proved. However, you know, approved up to a certain amount, so we don't need it yet. It's just also a back order. The monthly, take them back two samples to the dentist's lab.
Dana, you know what we were discussing today about, the, my, the, over there?
Yes, that's, again, that's, that's why we know, with that following, some more gear work, they should add those about there. It's hard to say, because where do you put it? Because we don't know if we're going to have to dig every day. May need to make another category on it, you know, as needed.
Right.
When you're, you know.
What happened was, there was a place that they thought was ten inches, and they called Patterson, they gave him a seven hundred dollars, and it turned out it was a warranty. And they didn't dig it first to see what it was, and they need to, they need to dig it first and see it, and we have to have it done by someone else, you know.
It was assumed that it was a ten inch AC line, but once Patterson got out, it actually seemed like it was a one inch herb sock.
So they had to play Patterson?
Yes, sir.
So they need to organize the. No, I don't want them to do, I want them to be able to call Dana or I, so that we know what's going on. I don't think, you know, if it's a dire emergency, no, don't call me.
Now, the ten inch AC line, I will say, it was presented to me that, that they knew was no ten inch AC line. Should we call Patterson for that one? Yes, because, because we don't have the equipment to work on an AC line. But then after I got the bill is when I realized that it was on the AC line, had y'all dug, did y'all dig to first to make, to verify that was not done. So that's a discussion that needs to be had.
I think that says their situation.
Exactly, correct. That's, that's the rule we just decided.
Do y'all have any questions about their job descriptions?
In addition to that procedure for covering things exactly around there, is that for some reason you've got to handle this, cover the duties of somebody, you start today, how do they do all those things?
Right, I'm just verbal, hey, this is, you know, the difference.
Yeah, it needs to be on the job report.
So, what do you think? Who wants?
Procedures.
Should be the procedure manual, there should be a procedure manual.
It should be.
And I will say, Debbie, I can find anything I need in that office, if I have to dig, it may not be where I thought it should be, but I can find it. I don't know if there is a procedure manual for the works to work anywhere.
Especially this stuff, if we're able to, if we're liable to do, and it has to be done according to procedure, you know, frequency, how exactly is it done? It may or may not.
And this may be something that we'll bring up, that may need to be brought up. There is a gentleman by the name of Andrew who used to work for Patterson, who anytime I have a question, I call him, and he's, he started his own consulting firm. That, you know, having the guys write the procedure manual, I don't know if that's something we want them to do, or if that's something we may want to approach Andrew without contacting him out and seeing if, A, if he could, B, what are we looking at for cost loss.
There definitely needs to be procedures written for a lot of this stuff. Because if one of them gets hurt, and we can't go back to where you aren't following procedures or don't have any procedures.
We're going to help them.
Yeah. There and forth.
They have done our, our answerers got for us, and perhaps they may have procedures. Because the procedure's going to be the same, because there are certain steps you have to do in order for these collections. And the recordings and all that, Patterson was the one who came out before walking beside those guys when they started, showed them how we take the recordings, the page, the form we had was very Fair Bonds based, Patterson sent me an email and said, "This is the form we use," and it's much more detailed, and TCQ was very happy with the form, has passed inspection, so it helped tremendous.
So how do they, how does the generator fall in here?
The generator?
Yeah.
Does the generator run for one?
I understand that, but am I missing something on here? Do they not check it on a, I'm assuming it should be running once a week?
Ours is checked once a week.
Yeah, who checks it?
Ours comes on automatic, he comes on automatic.
I understand that, but who?
There's a number, does yours have the, the rock mine, is that?
I don't think so, it's just, it has a thing out there that you check, and what was happening on this?
I understand, that's what I'm getting at, do we have?
I have no idea. I have no idea what the generator is.
Yeah, well, that should be in here.
It doesn't become a problem until, or you see it doesn't come on, and then you say, "Well, who checked it last year?" "We really checked it six months."
Okay, so how do y'all know from my preset, so we can add to their job descriptions?
We have a generator for our house.
Yes.
The oil has to be changed, the filter has to be changed, and it'll tell you if it's not working, we had to replace one part in ours, so you can't just say it comes on and it goes off. It needs maintenance, oil, oil filters.
Well, that's, we, we pay Lofton Equipment for that, that's what we pay Lofton Equipment our yearly fee for.
Do they have a maintenance agreement?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Will they provide a maintenance for a while?
Yes, sir. They provide.
Generac is going to come to ours for three hundred, Jim does it for fifty dollars himself.
And, and I mean, if there is a system that they're using now that checks in, you know, that's fine, we just need it listed so that, I mean, maybe it comes in here to the office, but if nobody ever looks in the office to see that it's happening.
As of, I will tell you right now, the council, last year, approved, so we had to do the service agreement with Lofton in order to cover the warranty, and Lofton comes out and they do that. Now, once that our warranty's, we don't have to use Lofton anymore, we can, the guys can do the maintenance themselves, yes.
There should be a maintenance book and procedure book with that generator when it was purchased, that it should be here somewhere, and I mean, go by that, kind of get your, get your information from that.
I think we have the same generator, don't you have a generator?
Jim took the filter and the oil filter and the air filter or whatever down to O'Reilly's, and he could get exactly what he needs for our generator from there.
It's his comment, so.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
But he, he took out, so he knew exactly when he needs to order it every year, what to get now.
Okay, so how do y'all look to that preset?
Well, we need, we need to head to this.
Well, that's, but what are you going to add to it?
So, so the job description is only happy to.
For the most part, yes.
Because I think we, we're moving to something different, we've got descriptions for longer schedules.
Yeah, but if it, if it's not included in the description or without descriptions?
It should, it should be tied to a task.
Then you don't add, did you add the generator or anything?
As long as they're providing, so as long as they're providing a law, if somebody internally is reviewing that law.
But are they?
Well, that's the question.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I don't think whenever that, whenever theirs is up, they'll see, well, not adding to them, it was already there.
And you know how often Lofton does their deal, I don't think it's weekly.
I don't believe it.
Because I've seen it down there.
My job description has another, it says assigned, it's a lot, basically, for us, we just, Friday, Thursday, tomorrow, you have a, so do we?
Oh, well, at least on back this, oh, first, uh...
Oh.
I said, if you wanna make sure that they don't say, "Well, that's not my doing," or that's not my doing.
Yeah, put that on, uh... And I guess that would probably be on, on daily.
They may automatically do it, there's so many things you can just do automatically that we don't need to talk about. Yeah.
Do we have any other discussions?
I would like to see it all faked before it's, okay, make sure everything's there. Unless I delay on viewing, you know, was our job doing, for the, to it.
Yes.
Ever.
So table till next, uh, till next, uh, regular meeting, and remove possible workshop rate.
Okay.
I'll say good luck.
Okay. Any ads?
Uh-huh.
Debbie, did you?
All right.
Thank you. The next one is discuss and consider action of RBS, test software integration of e-bills and auto pay.
Pretty even, I'm, the basic gist of this one, how it's like, you know, that they have, that it does everything we want it to do. It's hundred and twenty, it's a hundred and twenty-five dollars, they are actually wanting to pay that for us, but that's the one that's not going to go with. The only, the, the difference between the two, between hundred and twenty-five and eight hundred, whatever it was, hundred and twenty-five. Is it nine ninety-five? Yeah, that one automatically enters the payment to the RBS. I don't think they need to spend that much money, what I've been doing, the way I've been doing it, this whole time.
There are other fees.
There are other fees if we opt to do them. Oh, yes, three hundred RBS, so that's a one-time setup fee, that's the e-bill notification. So that would, we would have to pay three hundred dollars for that, that's for those that sign up, we'll give that, instead of getting through card, they will get an e-bill notification so they can sign it, and then if they're, we'll, it's online. The add-on options, um, I did ask for clarification on this, if you look under the add-on options, if the ten cents per user, that's every single time we would send out a notification, so if we had a boil war notice or the water main breaks, but that's every single time that we send out a note of text, whoever signed up.
You mean that they were signed up?
Whoever signed up with their cell phone, or to get text notifications, uh, of boil war.
Or individual.
Or individual, but that's only for boil war notices, stimulating circumstances.
Who'd sign up for that unless they had a, is the presumption that they're going for household?
Yes, maybe too. Probably, yeah, we're probably, we can always add the, we can approve whatever and always go back and do the add-on options later, we don't show juice. Uh, but like, if you look for the next bill, pay reminders, like, you see that the text alerts for, um...
Basically, any of the stuff that goes out from them that is about them getting paid is free.
Correct, yes, thank you for some of that.
Any extra you want, you're gonna pay for.
Correct.
Anything that's like, important to notify people about their health and safety and consequences first.
Yes, yes.
So everybody's all going to do this, but...
No, it's optional, it is all optional, only if you sign up.
But we do have to pay the setup fee and all that. If we decide to allow, allow these people to use it.
Every year?
No, no, it's a one-time, one-time, that's it.
So, uh, they'll pay a hundred and twenty-five?
Yes. Here's, this, this right here, the next bill and RBS e-billing notification, so it's gonna be three hundred, and at this page right here, it gives you a good, touches what, what all is included in that. No, it should be the last page of that entire packet, and the second to last page, like, second to last and last page.
How many of y'all would choose to do the C bill?
Nobody else.
I don't understand, I just, I just get, I'm just opposed. Yeah, nobody's, I mean, I don't know if you spend three hundred dollars for nothing.
There's no such thing as an E hypervisor. It goes into that computer, it becomes virtually public knowledge, and it's so convenient for them to lose. We've got many, many bills that they want us to pay online, and every month the bill is different than it was in the beginning in the contract. So, I don't, I don't think that's a good idea. I wouldn't be interested.
So, and so, and that being said, if we do the, the three hundred, that's gonna be, I mean, we can't just say, "Oh, we got three hundred dollars, we're gonna spend this, you know, and this." It's gonna have to be more or less put through to everybody, I mean, the three hundred dollars has gotta be paid by the public.
And if it shouldn't be paid, it knows how to use it.
That's what I'm getting at.
What's the, what's the cost of processing it the way we do it, like?
I mean...
The stamp, it's a lot.
The postcard stamp is around, I mean, the postcard stamp is on up to about...
How much is a postcard stamp?
Seven cents for a regular letter.
Postcard stamps are like, they were forty-five, I think.
Stamp is sixty cents. Postcard's probably around fifty-four.
Fifty-four, I thought, five, eighty-four.
But if you do like, most of the other city, uh, they're, they're machine, and...
It's cheaper.
It's cheaper in the long run.
We don't have enough, we don't produce enough deals to move a machine or a, or a truck. At least, that's what everybody asks them to, we don't...
So, wait, I mean, if you get half, half the subscribers on this, you go pay twenty-seven four months, that's for a person.
Add a poll?
Yeah, add a poll, but I don't know if you, that, that's bad. What'd you say?
Everybody loves it on Facebook.
Well, I don't think. And that's just personal, that is not included, reminder notices, which is not included.
We're starting on a, it's a couple of months, she has to sell it.
Correct, that...
Not counting.
And that's...
Not feeling the time to, to process it.
That only knows what's a good idea.
She still won't have the process, because, yeah, the ones on us is not gonna get it, still need our...
And, and a lot of the ones, just like me, if I'm gonna pay something online, I still wanna pay the copy. You know, I mean, I wanna know what to do, when to do, and all that. So, I don't know if you people have any plans, but you...
Well, it specifically says here that if you sign, they sign up. E-bill, your customer will be able to let go paper bills from within your online web portal, upon selection, our system will buy their account, and RBS will be able to receive a paper bill, so now they could still get a paper bill as well. But the system itself, when you pull it up, it actually has a really nice version of the paper bill, and it actually shows the usage, and it shows your disposable dollar requirement.
And what did you say about the, the five hundred or something?
In order to get the machine that everyone's talking about, the, the, the post, the fitness, the machine?
That's for the stamp.
That is for, yes, everybody, correct, everyone, every vendor that we contacted said that you don't get the discount unless you probably sign with your, top of the...
Any motions?
I'm, I'm sorry, how many, how many checks do you have, like? The majority of the...
I can pull up the, I can pull it up through the bank, because you know, the checks typically are being deposited, the check right up here, go in and pull up and let's work, we're just, I can see, give our account, what we deposited, whatever. I'll talk ahead, no.
Is there a theme for that, for my mind?
This was more of a general issue, having the rising cost of stamp, and the unfortunate that people aren't receiving the paper bill in the mail anyways, and, or I'm getting people bringing me, "Hey, this was in my mailbox," and it's not there yet. So, looking for solutions of how to retell some lease, or at least give the option for those who want it. Three hundred dollar one-time bait that we could use it for the next ten years, I mean, throughout thirty bucks a year.
Well, you're worth it, naturally, what an interesting thing you can do, because we're out of shape. But that's a piece of paper that gets out of the file.
Do you have a motion?
I mean, we have, I'll make a motion that we put a, put a poll out, and see how many people would actually use it. Put it on the website or whatever.
Because you got all these people that should sign up, so, before I voted on to spend three hundred dollars for just three hundred dollars.
Yeah. We're already making a motion to put it on the website for a poll. If there's a second sign, it's not...
Is there a second?
It has.
Is there a second, or, I, I was saying we could put a poll, just, oh, we're not, we're not...
You're tabling this until you can get it off the poll?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Because you gotta do a poll, and then we don't bring it back to the table, then what was the point of polls?
Yeah, that is true, yes.
We're about to see, you know, what the...
You're asking people who don't, you know, our one each, and, yeah, it's a pay their bill. Sorry, if they take the poll, they're at least willing to use it.
Okay, the motion was made, is there a second?
You assume a lot, you assume a lot, yeah.
I'm tabling, tabling next meeting.
Now we're moving to new business. Discuss and consider action, set planning and zoning meeting for one-one-one Park Street.
Oh, that's, uh...
Armstrong's place the gin.
Yeah.
Well, have they sent out where the people are going?
No, they can't do that until they, until the state set, and they just finally got their signage in.
Okay, okay.
So I need to jot up the dates, so, tell them what the date is, and they can put it, and at least has to at least be two weeks out from now.
Who's due this, before the council, next September?
Yeah, kind of six-thirty in Colorado.
Yes.
Can't hear.
Set?
Didn't see me, it's twelve September, or four, five.
He's talking about the, the planning and zoning, uh, meeting for Park Street, the twelfth of September.
So, procedurally, we would have to just, you're in the part, public council?
Yes, so, they will post their signage stating this is the date, I have the date, there are, what, four, I think, properties that are within this footage that I have to send letters out to, that way those people also know that right here by them, they wanted to rezonate property, and then they can come up and voice their concerns, if nobody voices their concerns, they don't care that it's being changed, then eventually it will go that, that meeting, but then eventually it'll go to the council to then vote as to whether or not y'all want to approve the rezonate change.
Does it also have to be posted?
At the property, yes.
Oh, there, and on the website.
Is it like a regular?
The meeting, except what we posted, yes, but, yes.
He's talking about the information itself.
Where you're talking about the request itself.
Yes, right.
No, the request itself does not have to be posted, it has, we have to have the copy here for people to look at it.
So it doesn't have to be posted from public, you have?
Oh, we can, we can, we can, yes. It would have to be, no, can we request this, yes, so that everybody can see it.
I would think it would need to be, I don't think it'd need to be on the website, or what this is gonna be.
They don't even know what they're, what's gonna be.
I, I know, I understand that, that's why it's kinda crazy, but...
I know.
Anyway.
Like, I'm sure that we said, it's a meeting day on September twelfth, at six-thirty.
Did you hear, Dan?
Six-thirty?
Yes.
And the public can speak?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, you gotta do, start, you know, our hand motion.
Three seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
The next point is, uh, discuss, consider action under public sanitation renewal.
I'm gonna just, 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 uh, to get, because we haven't reached out to all the companies. We just haven't received those quote yet, and we're not due until January twenty-three, so we have time.
So we are getting, well, it's...
We have Sam, who had other companies reach out wanting to do this, and they just had it on it to a jet.
Can you say that's good, or, or?
Uh, no sanitation, yeah, sanitation solution. Uh, no sanitation... Yeah, sanitation solutions is one of them. I can't remember the other one right now, but is that the one we had before?
Yeah.
Yes. I believe that's what it's on the road. And I heard it was a little invasive.
Move the table.
Three seconds. All in favor? Okay, the next point is to discuss and actually make Planahan and Holmes engagement fair.
We're not all yet?
Huh?
Is this still, like, three hundred thousand?
Twenty-five thousand, yeah. It's because of the...
Eleven, more than eleven. Twenty-six, five, or something like that.
It's more like six, twenty-five.
How much?
It's more like six, twenty-four.
Yeah, we're not seeing twenty-three.
Twenty-three, five, sorry.
That's actually fifteen hundred. Last page, third paragraph, second line. The city has worked with Brittany Martin as our CPA for her, and she's definitely made the job. I do know when she left Planahan, the city followed her. It's not so much in Planahan itself as it is Brittany.
So whether she leaves, that's... Acquiring a contract for them.
We're going to have to be in contract for some.
I'd break the law.
It's September thirtieth anyways, so... Not all this paid.
That's what we need to put out, which more bits, and then just so that we kind of know where other companies are.
Saying we make sure that they put four hundred seconds in there. Use the board. Yes, for not, not a, not a cash on it. Be okay.
Do I have a second?
She has a second.
Three seconds.
Debbie.
Debbie.
What was the date you sent here?
Next meeting.
Next meeting.
Discuss... Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Discuss and consider action set date for budget workshop.
We don't have the information from...
We've only got a DVD in the trunk.
Supposed to be the twenty-eight. We need to find out why we don't have it.
I don't know whether this should take, unless you have it or haven't, from Planahan's own. I mean, I don't... Can I get ridiculous, but the budget workshop, you know?
Yeah.
And we're not doing it.
So, are you taking?
No, I'm just saying, don't have one next week.
She's saying that at six P M.
Oh, yeah.
I was saying, maybe have, with the information that we should have, it should not take over thirty minutes to finish the budget.
Well, especially if we get it in advance, then we can plug it up or into the same calculation we did last year. So we can see what our rate is.
So are you giving six?
Six on the twelve.
When?
Twelve.
September?
September the twelfth, six o'clock.
Russell, did you make that motion?
Not yet. We're discussing. Okay, yes, I'll make a motion to set budget workshop for September twelve at sixteen.
I'll say that. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Discuss and consider action set date for ordinance workshop.
We already have one for...
Well, I think we should write the last one, just three years first.
I'm going to do it, uh, like before that October meeting. At six o'clock. That'll be when the tent...
October tenth?
October tenth.
Six P M.
Six P M. Make a motion to set the ordinance workshop for October the tenth.
All in favor?
I'm sorry, no, second.
I need a second. We're all in favor. We're not, we haven't posted, so do I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?